Lynn Markham is your presenter today. Lynn is a shoreline and land use specialist with CLUE. Lynn focuses on zoning board of adjustment and appeals, as well as land use tools and techniques to help communities. She has written several publications on shoreline zoning. And is co-author of the zoning board handbook. Becky Roberts is assisting in the background during the presentation. She's a land use specialist with CLUE, providing training for plan commissions and other local land use officials. Lynn is ready to begin the webinar.
All right. Thank you, Karen, and thank you everyone for coming tonight, for joining us for this webinar. I imagine some of you are new zoning board members or maybe zoning board members who are looking for a refresher. This webinar is also suitable for zoning staff, for plan commission members, zoning committee members, elected officials, and anyone else around Wisconsin who wants to learn more about the role of the zoning board and specifically about variances. So we are going to start with two polls. The first is, I would like you to just click on what is your role or position related to zoning? It could be the zoning board of adjustment or the zoning board of appeals. It could be zoning staff, an elected official, plan commissioner, zoning committee, an interested person or other. We'll give you a minute to enter your answer on this one. When it slows down, then we'll close the poll. Still lots of people waiting in. It looks like, not surprisingly, zoning board of adjustment and appeals members is first, has the majority, or forty-four percent, followed by plan commission and zoning committee, which those two are very closely linked. What one does always affects the other. Zoning staff, elected officials, and then a few interested folks, which is great. All right, so we can end that poll. And our second poll, you'll need to X out of the first one. The second poll is, how many people are watching from your site? Is it one or more?
Lynn, that poll was in the first one.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I'll relaunch it again. Okay, and if people could just re-vote on both of the questions. If you have to scroll down for the second question.
I see. Yep. Okay. Thank you for entering. It looks like we have a few groups of five and more than five, maybe seventeen groups across the state. Mostly people watching individually, but also some smaller groups as well. So that's great. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so our outline for tonight's webinar. We're going to start with a very brief introduction to zoning. Then we're going to jump into what is the role of the zoning board? And really, it comes down to acting like judges and weighing the evidence that comes in front of you. It's not based on your opinion. Does the applicant provide evidence that they meet all the legal standards? That's really the question in deciding a variance. We'll talk about the decision-making process. Then we'll dig into the details of variances. What are those three legal standards that an applicant needs to provide? Facts, evidence that they meet in order for the BOA to have the authority to grant a variance? And then we have a couple of practice situations. One that's gone to court and another one, just to look at whether you would grant the variance, applying what we talked about tonight. Okay, so a little introduction to zoning. The purpose of zoning is it's one of the tools to achieve your community goals. Every community has different goals. But some common ones include protecting public health, safety, and welfare. That's typically done through general zoning. Protecting natural resources that may be done through shoreline or wetland zoning or forestry zoning. Community character and aesthetics. And protecting both the public and the private investments in terms of what's adjacent to what, as well as density of development. All zoning ordinances have two parts. They have a zoning map, something like this, that show the different zoning districts. So we have different zoning districts as shown on the zoning map. And within each zoning district, there are permitted uses, conditional uses, and prohibited uses. The permitted uses are allowed by right in all parts, on all lots within that zoning district. The conditional use may be allowed if it's well-suited to that location and meets the standards for conditional use. And any land use that's not listed for a given zoning district is prohibited in that zoning district. Okay. In addition, yes.
Lynn, I was wondering, can you back up one more slide? We had a request that there may have been a slide with a map before that. If so, we missed this one as well.
Okay. So a zoning ordinance contains two parts. The first is the map, and then the second is the text. So this is the zoning map. It shows the different zoning districts such as residential, industrial, commercial, and conservancy. So where these uses will be located within a community. Then we have the permitted, conditional, and prohibited uses for each district. And lastly, we have a zoning text. There are purposes for that zoning ordinance. Uses allowed in each zoning district. Dimensional standards such as lot sizes, density, setbacks, heights, et cetera. And then requirements related to parking, signage, landscaping, as well as who has authority to do what and what the procedures are. Dimensional standards would include the lot size and the density of development. You can see here the buildable area. So after you apply the side yard setbacks, a road setback, a water setback, you're left with your buildable area. So the dimensional standards define the size and location of the buildings on the parcel through these standards. In addition to general zoning, which is mostly what we just covered, we also have overlay zoning in Wisconsin. These are special zoning districts that overlay the general zoning. They create special provisions in addition. So both the general zoning and the overlay zoning apply. If one is more restrictive than the other, if the overlay zoning is more restrictive, then that applies. Some examples of overlay zoning in Wisconsin are shown here, are listed here. All right. So now we're going to jump into terminology. Terminology for boards of adjustment and boards of appeal, as well as who does what. So Wisconsin statutes define that counties and towns without village powers have boards of adjustments. Whereas cities, villages, and towns with village powers have boards of appeal. We commonly refer to both of these as zoning boards or BOAs. Some communities use the term ZBA. It's important to understand that all zoning boards are different from a zoning committee or a plan commission. And we're going to dive into what those differences are next. So there are three types of zoning decisions that can be made. The first is legislative. This is adopting things like comprehensive plans or land use plans, zoning ordinances, and amendments to those zoning ordinances. The legislative decisions, there's a high level of discretion allowed. The requirements are simply that those decisions are reasonable and constitutional, and public participation is encouraged anywhere, anytime. Quasi-judicial decisions, these are the decisions made by zoning board members. The zoning board has limited powers that are outlined in statutes and in case law. They must apply predetermined standards, those listed in the local ordinance and in statutes. They may apply additional conditions. And discussion of these decisions, variance decisions, conditional use decisions, and plat review, as well as administrative appeal decisions, have to be made only during the hearing. We also have administrative decisions. These are applying the ordinance as written with no additional conditions. Okay, so who makes the different zoning board decisions? We have legislative decisions. It's typically the plan commission or zoning committee that makes a recommendation based on information and perhaps recommendations from staff. And it's the local governing body, such as the county board or the city council, that's going to adopt those plans, ordinances, and amendments. We have quasi-judicial decisions. These are variances made by the zoning board. Administrative appeals also always made by the zoning board. And then conditional uses. State law allows for three different bodies to make conditional uses, and your local ordinance will define who makes conditional use decisions in your local government. We also have administrative decisions. These are such as permitted uses, and these are made by planning and zoning staff. In terms of zoning roles, I want to highlight the difference between elected officials that adopt and amend the zoning ordinance, like we just saw on the last slide. They have a lot of discretion. And zoning board members that act like judges. They're not elected typically. And they're applying the ordinance and the state laws as they're written today.
Lynn, can I ask one clarifying question here, since we have such a diversity of folks attending? Is it generally okay or recommended to have any overlap between elected officials and the zoning board? And by that zoning board of adjustment or board of appeals?
Right, right. Good question. It's not illegal. There's nothing in state statute that says you can't have elected officials on the BOA. However, we recommend against it. And that's because it can create a conflict of interest when a variance applicant is also a constituent of that elected official. A BOA member also can't claim to be unbiased regarding the ordinance if they previously voted for or against adoption of a zoning ordinance or an amendment of some provision within that ordinance.
Excellent.
You bet. So a few tips here. It's a good idea to let the applicants know that the zoning board has limited powers and is required to follow the local ordinance and the state laws. The zoning board doesn't have the flexibility to do whatever they'd like to do. They have to follow these standards. They need to make legally defensible decisions, which means the zoning board can only approve variances when the applicant has met their burden of proof to show that they've met all the legal standards. And only the elected officials can change the local zoning laws. That's not something that can be done by the BOA. All right. So I wanted to put this out there. I feel that many times when your applicants are coming before the zoning board, this is their first time, this is their first experience before a zoning board. And there are a few exceptions to that. But I think it's important to explain to applicants, as well as any neighbors or other people who might be attending the hearing, what a zoning board is, what they have authority to do, what they don't have authority to do. So this is basically stating just what we talked about, that they have to function like a court, follow the rules. They can't apply anything but have to apply the laws as they're written. And that an applicant has to provide evidence that they meet all the legal standards. So this is available on the resources webpage that you'll have a link to. We'll also provide that near the end of the presentation. Okay, so the zoning board functions like a court. So zoning board members act like judges. They have to follow three sets of laws. State statutes, case law, which is court decisions from the higher courts, and their local zoning ordinances. The primary role of the zoning board is to review and decide applications related to specific properties. They make quasi-judicial decisions, which means they make decisions like a judge would. The zoning board can't change or ignore any part of the law, but must apply the laws as they're written today. To be a zoning board member, you have to be neutral regarding the applications and weigh the evidence. And if what you want to do is change the zoning ordinance, the best way to do that is to run for office because it's the elected officials that have the authority to change the zoning ordinance. Like I said, the zoning board functions like a court. And just like all court decisions, zoning board decisions can be appealed to the higher courts. And what that looks like in Wisconsin is shown here. From the zoning board, it would be appealed to the circuit court first, then the court of appeals, and then up to the Wisconsin Supreme Court. This slide shows how towns interact with zoning boards. So if you're a town with town zoning, it would be your town zoning board that would make decisions on variances. And then the appeal of any of those decisions would go to circuit court. If you're a town that works with the county and is part of county zoning, county general zoning, and then all towns are part of shoreline zoning, then the process is a recommendation is made by the town board or plan commission. That goes to the county zoning board, and then the appeal again would be up to circuit court. So if the zoning board follows state statutes, case law, and their local zoning ordinance, their decisions will generally be upheld by the courts. A solid legal record includes the evidence from the hearing and the reasoning of the zoning board. Providing a solid legal record minimizes legal costs and zoning board reconsideration. In short, the zoning board has to follow the laws and has limited flexibility. Okay, so now I've got a little situation here. Let's say the zoning ordinance standard for roadway setbacks in a given neighborhood is thirty feet. A property owner named Joe wants a variance so he can build a garage fifteen feet from the roadway. No neighbors object to Joe's request. His county board member is in favor of his variance. A lot of people would like to build closer to the road than the thirty-foot setback. How should the zoning board react to this information of what the opinions are of the neighbors, what the opinion is of the county board member? And you can jump into... I'm trying to see if people are... Yeah, okay, so I see that some are already in chat, and that's fine. Or you can put it in Q and A, your thoughts about how this would work. What should the zoning board do? How should they react to this information that many people would like to build at a lesser setback? Is that a reason to approve or deny Joe's variance application? Okay. I'm seeing do not approve, deny, deny, apply the existing rules, deny the request. No, the law is thirty feet, they should deny. Okay, so I think you've got the point. It's not based on opinion. Judges don't base their rulings on people's opinions. They base it on whether the legal standards are met. So the fact that a number of people are fine with or in favor of Joe's application doesn't mean that his application should be granted for that reason. Now, we haven't talked about what evidence Joe might provide. That's what they should base their decision on, is the evidence that's provided, whether they meet those standards or not. A quick analogy is if someone is sent to court because they were speeding. Let's say they were going seventy miles an hour in a fifty-five zone. Does the judge get to say, "Well, I think the standard really should be seventy miles an hour along that stretch of road"? That's not the judge's role. Judges don't get to change the rules. They have to apply the current rules as they're written to the people that they apply to. All right, we're going to jump into fairness and due process. Zoning boards have to comply with Wisconsin's open meeting laws. All meetings have to be open and accessible to the public, including the disabled. And the public has to be provided with advance notice of the meetings. Closed session, that is making decisions not in the public realm, not at an open meeting, are limited by statute. Related to zoning boards, really the only reason that a zoning board would go into closed session is the underlined one, legal consultation for current or likely litigation. So that means after the zoning board has made a decision on a variance or on a conditional use or an administrative appeal, then if they're being taken to court on that decision, then they can go into closed session in order to consult with an attorney. But making the decisions to grant or deny a variance, a conditional use, or an appeal may not be decided in closed session. Ex parte communication. Talking about a pending matter without the other party present. That's what ex parte communication means. It means that the information isn't included in the record and that the other party isn't present. So as a zoning board member, you should avoid this. You don't want to be talking with the applicant or the neighbors outside of the zoning board hearing. You should do your best to avoid any of these discussions. Just let people know you're not allowed to have these conversations and encourage them to come to the hearing. Or if they can't attend the hearing, to send some written correspondence that can be included in the record. If zoning board members do have ex parte communication at the grocery store or wherever outside of the hearing, they should disclose that during the hearing. And like I said, encourage citizens to include their thoughts, their information during the hearing, so it's part of the record. Yes?
Could you clarify one question that popped up in the chat? One person was questioning, why would you need legal consultation right at the meeting? And are you saying that you should have a separate closed session?
Okay, so if, for instance, a variance decision has been made, whether it was made to grant or deny the variance, and someone is appealing that decision to circuit court, that would be the first step. Then the board of adjustment may go into closed session to consult with the board of adjustment attorney about how they're going to represent the BOA at circuit court. So it could be part of a public, well, it would be part of a public meeting. There might be public hearings during that meeting. But when the zoning board is talking to the attorney about going to court during that session, they can go into closed session. And that needs to be noted on the agenda as well, that they'll be going into closed session for that reason. Thank you. Okay. Because zoning board members are making quasi-judicial decisions like a judge when they're deciding on variances and conditional uses, zoning board members can't harbor bias or prejudge the application. If you do have bias related to a given applicant or situation, you should recuse yourself if you have bias, or if you have a conflict of interest, or if it would appear that you're biased, you know, if this is a close relative or neighbor. Recusing yourself is not the same as abstaining. Abstaining means simply not voting. You shouldn't participate, when you recuse yourself, you shouldn't participate in the decision, the vote, or the discussion leading up to that vote. We recommend you physically separate yourself from the decision-making body, from the BOA, if possible. You do still have the right as a citizen to provide testimony. There's a question, do you need to provide the testimony? Or are these facts that a zoning staff person might provide? If a zoning staff person can provide them, I think that's the preferred option. But if you want to provide testimony, you can do that. But you should be sitting with the audience and provide it as a member of the audience. In terms of when to vote and when to recuse yourself, BOA members should recuse themselves when you can't be impartial, when you do have a bias. And it's up to each zoning board member to make that decision of whether you can be impartial or not, whether you have a bias or not. You want to ask yourself whether the nature of your relationship with the person or organization could bias your judgment. You also want to avoid the appearance of bias. You can think about if it was in the newspaper tomorrow, would people think you were biased if you were voting on this? Do they know that you're related one way or another to the applicant? BOA members aren't required to state their reasons for recusal. We have had a few situations across the state where whenever we have a difficult decision, a controversial decision going before the BOA, we have all sorts of BOA members recusing themselves. That can lead to a problem that there aren't enough members left to vote. So you want to avoid recusing yourself when controversial topics come up, unless you truly have a bias or a conflict. It is your job as a BOA member to weigh in, to vote on the controversial decisions as well, as long as you don't have a bias. In terms of voting requirements on the BOA, if a quorum is present, the BOA may take action by a majority vote of the members present. Your local rules can be more restrictive than that. They can require four out of five to approve something. So you can use your local bylaws or your ordinance to clarify how many BOA members must vote to take action. But you need a majority vote of the members present in order to take action, unless your ordinance says otherwise. Okay, now we're going to jump into variances. Okay, so let's start with what is a variance? It's allowing a landowner to do something prohibited by the zoning ordinance. So this image is showing a residential area. And if it's zoned residential and someone wants to put a gravel pit or a racetrack in here, that would be doing something prohibited by the zoning ordinance. Variances are meant to provide relief in limited, rare, unusual circumstances. They're not meant to provide general flexibility in the ordinances. If people agree that more flexibility is necessary in the ordinance, it's up to elected officials to revise the ordinance in order to incorporate that flexibility. And why do zoning variances matter? If we think of the purposes of an ordinance, so we talked about general zoning ordinances, health, safety, and welfare would be the purposes. If these are held in a bucket, then variances that are granted that don't actually meet the legal standards are kind of like poking holes in the bucket. And over time, the purposes of the ordinance are lost. If we allow people to build very close to the road, here, there, and wherever, we're going to lose some of that public safety, for instance. And that's actually my first example. So some of the purposes for roadway setbacks are safety, as well as accommodating road widening and utility replacement. Roadway setbacks protect the safety of drivers, passengers, and pedestrians by allowing people to see and react safely if someone is coming, as well as allowing for road widening and utility replacement. If variances are granted to roadway setbacks, they can result in more accidents and injuries, can also increase the cost for road widening and utility replacement. The photo shown here is from the rural area where I grew up in southern Wisconsin. Both roads shown have speed limits of fifty-five miles per hour. This is Carver School Road. And when you came down Carver School Road here, there was a stop sign here. And because this home and garage were built too close to the road, you had to pull into the intersection before you could really see who was coming to the left there. It was something I did a number of times because it was on my way to town. And a few years after I moved away from home, a driver died at this intersection, doing what I had done a lot of times. A few years later, this house was bought and removed to make the intersection safer for everyone. So zoning board decisions impact whether public safety is achieved in your community. Here's an example from shoreline zoning. In Wisconsin, our navigable lakes and streams belong In Wisconsin, our navigable lakes and streams belong to all the people of Wisconsin. Shoreland zoning applies to unincorporated lands near our waters for the reasons listed on the bucket, to prevent water pollution, protect spawning grounds, fish, and other aquatic life, and reserve shore cover and natural beauty. As shown on the left, shoreline zoning accomplishes these goals by keeping shoreline trees and other deep rooted plants near the shore to hold the soil in place. This prevents water pollution and protects the fish and spawning grounds. When we have hard surfaces like houses and driveways that create runoff, we have more erosion and water pollution. Granting variances to shoreline zoning standards can allow the buildings to be closer. And the water creates additional runoff going to the lake, carrying more soil and nutrients. So we're showing the differences between with shoreline zoning on the left and with no shoreline zoning, or with shoreline zoning but granting variances on the right. And just as an example, the closer buildings and other hard surfaces are built to the water, the more they harm fish. Granting shoreline variances can harm fish, water quality, and waterfront property values. We lose certain species of fish and quite a lot of species of fish as we get more and more impervious surface draining to our lakes and streams. What about floodplain zoning? We have it in place to protect human life and health, as well as minimize property damages and economic losses. When we grant variances to floodplain zoning, it reduces these purposes. It also increases the likelihood, and we've heard about this in the last few days, of the emergency service providers having to go out to rescue people from flooded homes and areas. Just some photos from Wisconsin. We know in Wisconsin, we're seeing more frequent and intense heavy rainfalls, and therefore, a noticeable uptick in the number and severity of flooding events. Okay, now back to variances more generally. We have two types of variances. A variance allows a property owner to do something prohibited by the ordinance. We have these two groups. A use variance allows a landowner to put a property to an otherwise prohibited use. This can present a number of problems. In some communities, simply say no use variances. In which case, an applicant will be applying for a rezone instead and going to the elected officials. The second type is an area variance. This is what most of our variances are. An area variance is a modification to a dimensional, physical, or locational requirement, such as setbacks, frontage, height, bulk, or density restrictions for a structure. An area variance also provides an increment of relief, normally small, from those physical dimensional standards. For all types of variances, it's the applicant that has the burden of proof to show that these three statutory tests, all three of them, are met. So the standards are, the tests are unnecessary hardship, that hardship is due to conditions unique to the property, and there's no harm to the public interest. And I'll go through each of these. I recommend that these tests are clearly listed on your variance application with space to respond to each one, also listed on the variance decision form. Speaking of variance applications, I think this is a key part before you get too deep in the weeds of deciding any variance. You want to make sure that you have a completed variance application in front of you. So I have an example shown here on the right, the variance granting criteria, where the applicant is to fill in how they meet each of the standards. Remember, they have to meet all the standards. So if one of these areas is blank, you do not have a complete variance application. Similarly, variance applications require a map, a scaled drawing. And usually, the ordinance and/or the application list what has to be shown on that drawing. If the things that are required to be shown on the drawing aren't included, again, you don't have a complete application. You need a complete application in order to make an informed decision. If the applicant hasn't answered all the variance tests and included the site map with all the required measurements, the BOA should table that application. Only complete variance application should be scheduled for a BOA hearing. And this saves everyone's time, as well as ensures that the BOA and the public have the full information about the proposal prior to the hearing. Okay, so now those three standards that an applicant needs to meet in order to allow the BOA to grant a variance. The first is conditions unique to the property. There has to be physical conditions unique to the property in order to grant a variance. So shown here in the photo, we have a lakeshore with steep slopes. But we have steep slopes all along this lakeshore. So a property owner claiming that their property is unique because it has a steep slope, well, it's really not unique because the neighbors have the same thing going on. So conditions unique to the property, such as a steep slope or wetlands, that prevent compliance with the ordinance would meet this test. Here's an example. We have a home shown here. This is the developable area on this lot after you apply the setbacks. And a shed was placed over here. Here's the shed. The owner says the property is unique due to a steep slope, trees, and shoreline. The question is, are these conditions unique to this property? Do they prevent building in a compliant location? If not, building the shed in a compliant location is a personal inconvenience. A personal inconvenience does not qualify for unnecessary hardship, which is one of the other standards. When we looked at slopes, we found that less than 6% in residential areas was considered buildable. So a slope of 4% is not something that prevents the property owner from building in this area. You can see there's quite a large developable area. So the shed would be allowed in any of this area. The property owner argued that there were existing trees, that they couldn't put it there, they didn't want to block windows. But the fact of the matter is that there's a large developable area. And so the property owner has options. The shed could be located within the developable area. It's simply a personal inconvenience or personal preference to have it outside of the developable area and be asking for a variance. It's also important to know that the circumstances of an applicant, such as a growing family or need for a larger garage or boathouse, are not a factor in deciding variances. It's the circumstances, the conditions of the land, not of the property owner. I put this photo here because I heard a variance situation where the property owner was arguing for a larger boathouse, asking for a variance for a larger boathouse. And eventually, during the hearing, it came out that the reason they wanted a larger boathouse was because they had bought a boat that was too large to fit in the boathouse. That would be an example of something that they brought upon themselves. The next is the public interest test. A variance granted may not harm the public interests. And what are the public interests? Well, they're the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So it's whatever it says at the beginning of the ordinance. That's the public interest, the purpose and intent. I suggest that you list your ordinance purposes on your community's variance application form and your variance decision form. So that's the public interest test. And then unnecessary hardship. What is unnecessary hardship? Remember, that's one of the three variance tests. We have this definition from the courts and now in statute. It says unnecessary hardship is present when compliance with the ordinance would do one of two things. It would unreasonably prevent the property owner for using the property for a permitted purpose. So for instance, if this is zoned residentially, that they would not be able to use it in any way for residential use. If you have an existing structure, that's unlikely. So then the second part is unnecessary hardship is present when complying with the ordinance would be unnecessarily burdensome in view of ordinance purposes. So what does that unnecessarily burdensome mean? Fortunately, we have a court case related to a family room. This red rectangle here shows the footprint of that family room. And the question that went up before the Supreme Court eventually, in this case, upon appeal, was should an after the fact variance be granted for that family room shown in red? Because removing it would be an unnecessary hardship. And the court came back with the answer saying, no, this variance should not be granted because that hardship was self-created. The property owner chose to put it there. And having the porch, the family room, was no more than a personal convenience. So that's the balancing act. Is something truly a hardship, an unnecessary hardship? Or is it a personal preference or personal convenience, but not necessary to make use of that property? The court went on to say in this decision, the growth of a family and personal inconvenience do not constitute unnecessary hardship, which justifies a variance. And it's not the uniqueness of the plight of the owner. It's not based on the circumstances of the owner, but rather the uniqueness of the land, the parcel, which is the criterion. Some other tidbits from variance case law. Self-created hardship, an applicant may not claim hardship because of conditions that were created by them, where they placed a building or a septic system in the past. They can't claim that to be hardship because it's self-created. Similarly, loss of profit or financial difficulty don't constitute hardship. A zoning board may consider an error of local government staff when deciding whether to grant a variance. If the neighbors are all fine with a given variance request, that doesn't justify a variance. The property owner still has to provide evidence that they meet the three legal standards. Similarly, if you have things that were built that are ordinance violations, they were illegally built, that doesn't mean that someone should be granted a variance to do the same thing. And keep in mind that a variance, once it's granted, runs with the property to all future property owners. So it's not just for the current property owner, but all future property owners. And that's the reason it's not based on the circumstances of the current property owner. It's based on the property itself. I recommend including a variance case law summary similar to this on your variance application and your variance decision form, just to keep these factors in everybody's mind, and especially those applicants who perhaps have never applied for a variance before. So it's important for them to see this. I do have example application forms and decision forms for variances on our webinar resource page. Okay, so back to this situation. I want to go through how the courts responded to the property owner's claims of having unnecessary hardship. The owner says if they're not allowed to have this porch or family room, it will be an unnecessary hardship. Because first, the porch is mostly built and it would have to be removed. The court said that's a self-created hardship. And self-created hardships don't count as hardships. The property owner says this lot is substandard in size. That is, it doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirements. The court said this lot is treated the same as all other small lots. The property owner says the porch could not be attached to the other side of the home. The court came back and said the porch might not be feasible at all on this property, the porch or the family room. There's no guarantee that everyone gets a porch or a family room. The property owner said they need the porch to enjoy lake living for his family, which includes six children. And the court said hardship is based on the property, not the applicant, not the property owner, but the property itself. The property owner said the porch would add to the value of the house. And the court came back and said loss of profit is not a hardship. Okay, so we're going to do a little poll here. What if we have 10 nearby neighbors who come to a variance hearing and they all state their opinion that the variance that's being applied for is fine? Is this sufficient reason to grant the variance? I see people are weighing in. Okay, it looks like we have pretty much, with one exception, across the board that people recognize that it's not an opinion situation. It's not how many people are, how many people are for or against. Again, it goes back to are the legal standards being met? Okay, thank you. We're going to skip the next one, which is kind of the flip of that. Okay, I'm sometimes asked what does constitute unnecessary hardship? Here's some situations. You can see this is a small, narrow lot. If we apply the setbacks and we're left with a very small area, a 200 square foot area. If it's zoned residential, but there's not enough room for a small home, then that might be something that would qualify for a variance. There's a stronger case for hardship if there are vested interests, if other permits have already been granted, such as for a driveway or a septic system, indicating that the local government views this lot to be developable. Another situation that would probably qualify for a variance is probably when we have cottages or cabins that don't currently have an indoor bathroom. And today, people expect an indoor bathroom. So adding a small indoor bathroom that goes into setbacks could also qualify for a variance, not specific to the property owner, but just our expectations as a society. Okay, so just to summarize, a variance can only be granted if the applicant shows their property meets all three tests. Unnecessary hardship, that hardship is due to conditions unique to the property and no harm to the public interests. I would caution you that you don't want to let variance decisions become a horse trading situation. Well, if you grant this variance, then I'll do that. That's not appropriate. It's the burden of proof on the applicant to show that they meet the three tests. I would also say that if you are a town that is part of county zoning, when you provide your recommendation to the zoning board, I suggest you also focus on these three tests and what evidence there is that these tests are met or not met. I also wanted to mention that when we're talking about floodplain variances, there are more than three standards. There are actually a lot more than three standards. So if you do get in a situation where you're deciding on a floodplain variance, make sure you're using the floodplain variance standards, which include the three, but then quite a number more. And I do have a variance floodplain decision form available on the webpage as well. Okay, decision making. So what's involved? Fact finding, determining whether information is credible. And in the end, the goal is to make legally defensible decisions, decisions that will hold up in court if they're appealed. You want to look at your decision forms. Make sure that they're clear, that they have the standards clearly listed. And there are three parts. There's the finding of fact. This is describing the proposal and surrounding conditions, as well as attaching or referencing maps, photos, other materials. So you want to have the facts of the situation and accurate drawings that are to scale and include everything listed in the ordinance that's supposed to be on the drawing. Secondly, your decision form should list the ordinance purpose and the variance standard should be listed. What we're showing here, the first variance standard is unnecessary hardship. There's a description of what that means. And then the property owner or applicant would be filling in why they think they have hardship. Secondly, must be due to conditions unique to the property. Secondly, must be due to conditions unique to the property. And the same, they would fill in what evidence they have that that's the case. As a zoning board member, your decision form will look something like this. And I recommend that you jot down notes either on your decision form or on a separate piece of paper. Why is each standard met or not met? What facts do you have to show that it's met or not met? The zoning staff should be presenting their staff report. Probably you'll receive it ahead of time or at the meeting. That report should contain the facts relevant to each variance test. It may also contain whether the staff feel that each variance test is met or not met. Okay, the next step after you collect the facts is for zoning board members to analyze and document how the applicant meets or doesn't meet each variance standard. I recommend you do this first individually, each BOA member, and then go around and share what you've come up with, whether you feel each variance test has been met or not met, whether the applicant has met their burden of proof that they meet each standard. Then the order and determination. So this is the decision. The application does or does not meet all three of the variance tests. If it meets all three, the variance should be granted. If it does not meet all three, if it meets two or one or zero, then the variance needs to be denied. If the variance tests are all met and the variance can be granted, BOAs have the ability to apply conditions to the variance. These can be dealing with erosion, these can be dealing with fences, but conditions that will limit the impact of this variance. It's up to local government to decide. You have the discretion in terms of how much weight you give to different evidence. You want to think about whether it's fact or opinion or speculation, somebody thinks it might be this way. Think about the source of the facts. Is it a professional with a background in the field they're talking about? Or has it been reviewed by professionals in that field? And then it needs to be documented. There needs to be something showing that this is the case, whether it was a traffic study or a look at values of nearby homes. If it's photos showing different parts of the property or other verified data. And keep in mind that the burden of proof is on the applicant that's seeking the variance or other exception. They have to show that they've met the ordinance standards, including the variance standards. Okay, we'll talk briefly about appeals of zoning board decisions and legally defensible decisions. This is not. Well, we can see here. Let's just focus on this part of it. So the zoning board of adjustment or appeals decisions are appealed to circuit court, then up to court of appeals and Wisconsin Supreme Court. So that's the area, they, that's the process that they would go through. And like court decisions, zoning board decisions can obviously be appealed to higher courts. This is the diagram I was after. Again, zoning board decisions go up to circuit court, court of appeals and Wisconsin Supreme Court. Okay, so if a zoning board decision is appealed to the courts, what criteria do the courts use to determine whether they're going to uphold that decision or not? So courts typically defer to local decision makers, including zoning boards, if these tests are made. First of all, are you the right government body to make the, to make the decision? If it's a variance, a zoning variance, and you're on the zoning board, the answer is yes. Did you follow the proper procedures? Did you have proper public notice? Did you stay in open session during the meeting and the public hearing? Did you hold the public hearing? Did you apply the proper standards? The proper standards for a variance are those three standards we just talked about. They come from, they'll be in your ordinance, state statutes and case law. Were you unbiased? Again, if you're biased or have a conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself. But were you unbiased? Could a reasonable person reach the same decision given the evidence that came before your board of adjustment or board of appeals? And then the last piece is simply, are the facts in the record? Do they support your decision and are they in fact in the record? Okay, so now I have a couple of scenarios. Given the time, I think I'm going to skip to the second one. If we have time, we'll go back to the first one. So the question is, would you grant this variance? Has the applicant provided facts showing that they meet all the variance standards? Okay, so now I'm going to skip a couple of slides and we're going to go to the second one and do it first. Okay, so the question is, would you grant a variance for this red addition? The situation is there is a steep slope under this deck from the house to the water. Other lake properties in this area also have steep slopes. It's a high-value house. The yellow dotted line shows the setbacks required by the ordinance. The owners want to enclose this deck. This deck was built without permits. They want to enclose it and turn it into an office and a master bedroom. They're also interested in adding a garage onto the side of the house. You can see that also does not meet the setbacks. Part of the deck and part of the garage do not meet the setback. Okay, there is a long letter from the property owner, but I think I'm going to pass over that for right now. So the question. I'm missing yes, but is, is the unnecessary hardship test met? And I see we've got lots of people who have voted already. Go ahead. We have the area variance hardship test outlined here. It exists when it would unreasonably prevent a permitted use of a property. So in this case, of residential use of the property or render conformity with such standards unnecessarily burdensome. Remember, we're not thinking about the applicant and what they have in terms of vehicles or boats or whatever. And a personal inconvenience or preference is not sufficient to meet the unnecessary hardship standard. Okay, so it looks to me like we have large agreement that the unique property limitations test is not met. Okay, so I'm not sure if you were answering unnecessary hardship that was on the slide or unique property limitations, which was on the poll, but either way, that's okay. Oh, okay, so why don't we weigh in on this one now? The unnecessary hardship test. Do you feel that the property owner has unnecessary hardship? Is it more than just a personal preference to have that porch? Okay, and we have quite a few folks that have weighed in here. I'm going to share the results. Okay, so in fact, we have everyone saying that the unnecessary hardship test is not met here. Like we saw earlier with that court case, the Snyder case, building porches or extra rooms, family rooms that don't meet setbacks unless it's something that, like I said, if there is no indoor bathroom, if it's something else, that's probably a personal preference, not an unnecessary hardship. Okay, so you can X out that poll and yeah, I see what happened. I think we already did the unique property limitations test and there seemed to be agreement that there wasn't a unique part of this property that limited complying with the ordinance. And we said that there were a number of steep slopes in the area, so that makes sense. And then here's our last one. What about the no harm to the public interest? So remember, first, we have to think about what is the public interest. So I went to the beginning of the ordinance. This is a shoreline ordinance. So the purpose and intent is safe and healthful conditions, preventing and controlling water pollution, protecting spawning grounds and aquatic life, and controlling building sites, placement of structures and land uses, and keeping those trees and shrubs in place. That's natural scenic beauty. It's also water quality protection by not allowing the soil to wash into the lake. Okay, so I see we've got a few more people weighing in on this no harm to the public interest test. And if you have a chance on this one, if you could go to the chat and tell me why you think there's no harm to the public interest or there is harm to the public interest, that would be great. I would be interested in seeing your reasons here. And while you're doing that, I also want to explain what the judges have told us. We've brought circuit court judges into some of our sessions. And they've said that when they're reviewing a zoning board decision, it's kind of like when you get to oh, fourth, fifth grade, you start doing long division problems in math class. And the teacher doesn't just want to see your answer. They want to see, how did you get there? They want to see your work. They want to see how you got there. And it's the same with the zoning board. Judges want to see your work. What are your reasons for why each test is met or not met? You have to be able to explain yourself. Okay, so I'm going to look at the chat here. No harm to the public interest. So most people said, no, they did not meet that standard. Fifteen said, yes, they did. And when I look at the chat, I see the deck is too close to the water. I see encroachment into the shoreline, number three of those ordinance purposes. Okay, that's good, being specific. If everyone did something similar, it could impact the water quality and aquatic life. And that's, that's very telling. It's, it's not just this property owner. The variance standards are the same for everyone. So thinking about those long-term impacts, if we allow everyone in a similar situation to do the same thing is a good way to think about variance decisions. Too close to the lake, runoff and setback, potential harm to the public interest because there may be increased runoff and pollution. It would also damage the vegetation and the natural beauty. I see all three. Someone says I see no harm because the hard surface area is unchanged. The vegetation is unchanged, but the garage is a problem. Okay, so I see what you're saying there. I would also point out though, that the variance, and perhaps I didn't represent it entirely as clearly as I should have. While they were asking to enclose that deck, the variance was also just to build the deck because the deck is currently illegal. So actually, in this case, the hard surface is increased because you're asking both to keep the deck and then to enclose it. So by keeping the deck, that's the increase in impervious surface. Okay, I think you all had some great answers there. Okay, so we hit on that one. And so we had somewhat of a split on the harm to the public interest. But the question in terms of granting the variance, you need all three tests to be met. So I think everyone agreed that two of the tests were not met. So if the third one was met, then it's still deny the variance because not all three were met. Related to that, in terms of approach, if you're deciding on a variance and everyone agrees that the first test is not met, the first variance test, you should continue on and go through all the variance tests. Because if your decision is appealed, the judge might not agree with you on the first test, but maybe they will agree with you and your rationale and some of the other tests. So keep going, finish your work, so that if it is appealed, you have a full record. All right, so we hit on that. I can tell you a little bit. So this did go to court. And the court said that the blocks had not met the test for unnecessary hardship. One of the zoning board members said he did not view the property as unique because it was like all other lake properties with steep slopes that have structures too close to the water. He said that under Snyder, that case we looked at earlier, it's the uniqueness of the land, not the uniqueness of the owner that must be taken into account. Another board member noted it was the intent of the ordinance to maintain a distance between the structures and the lake. He noted that the fact that the house was worth a particular amount did not mean the blocks were entitled to retain the deck as they had argued during the hearing. And the court of appeals concluded that the zoning board was justified in determining that this area variance to retain the illegal deck was based on a personal inconvenience rather than an unnecessary hardship. So the courts supported, endorsed the denial of this variance. I want to add one other piece here. Many, I didn't see it in the comments, maybe somebody typed it and I didn't notice it. You know, in this situation, you could argue that they could build the deck back here or the addition to the house back here. But the question is, what if there wasn't a compliant location to build the addition? You know, what if it was like this and you couldn't build back here? Is everyone allowed to, you know, just make additions to their house? And the answer is no. And that again goes back to Snyder. Other than, you know, bathrooms for homes that don't have bathrooms, there's no guarantee that you're going to be, be allowed to build beyond that building envelope, that allowed area according to the zoning ordinance. Okay, so I think you've seen these three. I wanted to make a quick note. We're not talking about conditional uses tonight, but conditional uses are a decision that zoning boards sometimes make or review. And there have been some changes just recently to conditional use law. It's these two acts listed. Act 16 provides alternatives for appeal of some conditional use decisions. And then act 12 limits the regulations and conditions that can be placed on conditional uses when those conditional uses are related to non-metallic mining. So if you decide conditional uses, I trust that your zoning staff or your attorney can help you get up to speed on these. Okay, I'd like to do a quick review and then we'll open it up for questions. The zoning roles. Remember, it's the elected officials that adopt the zoning ordinance and can make changes to the zoning ordinance. The BOA member's role is to act like judges and apply the ordinance and the state laws as written. Our key points that we covered tonight, and there's also a handout on the webpage that's called key points, that reads very similar to what we're going to go through here. The zoning board members act like judges. As a zoning board member, you have to be neutral and base your decision on the evidence and the current laws, whether that evidence meets the standards. BOA members have to be unbiased. If you're biased or would appear biased, recuse yourself from the decision. The same if you have a conflict of interest, recuse yourself from that decision. The zoning board is only allowed to grant a variance if the applicant provides evidence that they meet all the variance tests. To create a legally defensible decision, zoning board members must explain the reasons why each variance standard is or is not met based on the facts and the evidence in the record from the hearing and the application. Zoning board decisions can be appealed up to the courts. And if the zoning board follows state laws, case law and the local zoning ordinance, then your decisions will typically be upheld by the courts. All right, I want to just touch on this webinar resources page. You'll have access to the PowerPoint. The recording will be posted there in a couple of days. I have the key points handout there. There are also There are also the announcement of proceedings that we talked about in the beginning to let applicants know what zoning boards can and can't do. There are sample forms there, both application forms and decision forms, as well as an example staff report. So there are a lot of resources on that page. I hope that you find them helpful. In terms of more detail, we have the zoning board handbook. The table of contents is here. It's available as a full PDF online. If you just want to look at it or print it yourself. It's also available as a hard copy. If you go to this website, it will show you. There's an order form there that you can order hard copies. Okay, and one more poll here. Do you plan to take any of these actions after attending this evening's webinar? Please select all that apply. Looks like you're all weighing in. It's interesting to see what you plan on doing. Looks like many of you plan to share these webinar resources with your zoning board. Quite a few of you plan to focus more on the legal tasks in decision making as well as reviewing and updating really both. The application materials first, and then quite a number also for the variance decision forms. All right, that looks great. Thank you. Okay, and so with that, I am going to go to the Q and A section and see what kind of questions we have. Just looking at how many we've got. I see one about the handbook. Is the handbook updated or was it last updated only in 2006? It is the 2006. We do these workshops in terms of anything new. Not a whole lot has changed significantly. We've got somebody who ordered the handbook. Karen will respond to that in terms of when it'll be there or anything that you need to do there. I see some specific questions. Oh, okay, here's a here's a general question that sounds good. Could I quickly delineate the difference between conditional uses and variances? Yes. Variances allow a property owner to do something prohibited by the zoning ordinance. So for instance, building at a lesser setback than what's required in the ordinance. That would be a variance. A conditional use, they typically are uses, for instance. It might be, for instance, a bakery in a residential development. In some ordinances, dog kennels are a conditional use. So in the case of a conditional use, it's not something that's prohibited by the ordinance. It's something that the ordinance lists as possibly being allowed in that zoning district. So it's listed in the ordinance, and then there are standards that need to be met. We went through the variance standards tonight. Conditional use standards are listed in your local ordinance. So for instance, for dog kennels, conditional use standards could include hours of operation, that it's only going to be open certain hours. It could include distances to neighboring homes. It could include how many dogs or how many kennels are allowed on a given property. So it's conditional uses are listed in the ordinance. They're not prohibited by the ordinance, but there are standards that need to be met. Okay, does each member, each zoning board member, need to submit a written decision? Or can one individual or chairperson issue the written decision? Okay, good question. There isn't a legal written down requirement that each member needs to submit a written decision. However, I recommend that each member at least fill out the form for the written decision. And the reason there is we don't want group think. We don't want everybody just saying, oh, yep, I agree with the chair or some other member of the board. We want each people, each person doing the analysis themselves. And then the discussion of the various viewpoints. And maybe everybody agrees. But if people are thinking for themselves, it's fairly common that they don't always agree. And people may bring up something that other people hadn't thought of. So in the end, it can be one written decision that's submitted. But I highly recommend that each zoning board member is thinking for themselves and filling out a form first. Beyond detailed meeting minutes, how long should BOA members retain their decision paperwork from a particular proceeding? I don't have a specific number there. I think I think there are basically two options I would recommend. One is hand it in and make it part of the record. Or the other is just get rid of it. You don't necessarily want those sorts of things floating around. Okay, I see some responses to some of our questions. I see, should the discussion of the decision form also be a public meeting? Yes, it should. When you're talking about what you came up with related to whether each of the variance standards was met or not met, that should be happening in open session, open to the public, yes. Is the less than a half an acre a requirement to grant an exception for floodplain? I can't answer that. I'm not that familiar with the floodplain standards. The person who was in charge of floodplains was Brian Cunningham with Wisconsin DNR. There is another person in that department. Her name is Mia. And let me just point out the obvious. I have my email up here and I have it there for a reason. If you have specific questions for me that we don't get to tonight or if you need contact information such as for floodplain information, shoot me an email and I'll look up that contact information or other other issues. Okay, when considering granting, it says an ordinance, but I'm guessing it means a variance. If nobody objects, what is the issue? We have had neighbors not just object, but show up arguing for it to be granted. No harm, no foul, question mark? And the answer there is you need to stick to the standards. I understand the neighbors may not have a problem with it. They may want it. But if you let one person or three people start doing what the ordinance says you can't do, just because they would like to, because that's their preference, then why do you have an ordinance? If everybody agrees that a setback of 30 feet is too great and that the setback should actually be 20 feet, that's fine. But that change needs to be made in the zoning ordinance. So everybody has access to building at 20 feet, not granted one variance at a time. Another way of saying this is I've had some community members say that in their community, you can just buy a variance. You just pay the variance fee and you get your variance. So only people that pay whatever the variance fee is, which could be $300, $500, it depends on the community. In some communities, it's higher than that. You don't want people buying a variance. You want to treat everybody the same. And if they truly meet the standards, then they should certainly get a variance. But there's no point in just granting variances to whoever asks for them because it undermines your ordinance. Can I talk more about the staff error consideration? Yes, that comes from a case called Accent Developers versus the City of Menominee. I think it's City of Menominee BOA. And if you want to email me, I can send you that case. What happened is the building inspector approved the footings for a structure, a residence, and incorrectly approved them. They weren't at the required setback. The structures were built. And then after the fact, the applicant, the owner, applied for a variance. And in that case, they granted the variance. They said that the hardship was not solely self created, that the applicant did have, you know, part of it was their error and their contractor's error building them at the wrong spot. But part of it was the error of the building inspector. It didn't say that if there's a staff error, the variance must be granted. It did not say that. But it said the BOA may consider an error of the zoning staff when deciding whether to grant a variance. Thank you for that question. Can I give an example of when a variance was granted due to hardship of the land? Yeah, that's those two that I talked about. If you apply the dimensional standards, like the setbacks, and you're left with 200 square feet, for instance, and there's nowhere else to put it, that could be a situation or lacking an indoor bathroom. Those would both be a variance that was granted due to hardship of the land. But it's not the second garage or the third bedroom. Those are not hardships of the land. During BOA meetings, when Zoom is in use along with live meeting, as the meeting goes on, how do you limit late on the line use of public or participant wanting another person to speak as witness? I would treat the people online the same as the people who are there in person. If they're there at the right time, if they're there in time to provide testimony, when you're accepting testimony, then they should be able to do it. But if they come after that point in time, you know, they miss their opportunity. Okay, so that's what I see. Oh, I see one other question. Would I recommend that the chair of the board begin with ex parte communication disclosures at each meeting? I think that that's a good idea. You want to give the board members an opportunity to say if they had any ex parte communication. So I think that's a good thing to do near the beginning of the meeting, yes. Okay, and we have a couple more minutes left. So if there's anyone else who has questions. I do see there are some questions from staff or secretaries about minutes. If you could email those to me, I think that would be great. Could I please go over the variance decision for the garage cited in the handout? Sure. Let me just back up and we'll do that fairly quickly here in a couple of situations. Okay, so I'm assuming that you're talking about the first situation. Okay, so here was the other variance scenario that we didn't get to today. Until now. So we had an existing home here, home with an attached garage. And then the property owner built this garage and the concrete pad leading up to it without getting permits. The measurements are shown here and they don't meet the setbacks. The setbacks are supposed to be 100 feet and 50 feet instead of 76 and 34. So it doesn't meet the standards. There's a septic system over here and a well. There are electric and gas lines running here, the red dotted line. So the question becomes, should a variance be granted here? There are a couple of issues here. So we talked earlier about what are the purposes for roadway setbacks? And it's public safety and allowing expansion of the road later on. So that's that's what you're talking about here is public safety. This is County Highway I. This is probably a smaller road. Therefore, it has a lesser setback of 50 feet. In this situation, it's not immediately obvious. But when I looked it up online, this is actually a four acre lot. So there are many other places if you want to build another garage where that garage could go and meet the setbacks. So again, this is a personal preference. And then when pushed a little bit farther on here, it becomes similar to that family room or porch. There's no guarantee that everyone gets a second garage. If if you can fit a second garage on your lot, you know, in the buildable area with, you know, meeting the setbacks, by all means. But not, we don't want to allow everyone to build into the setbacks to build a second garage. So that's the short piece on that. And I see we're at 7:31 now, so I think we'll wrap it up here. I thank you very much for coming today. Let me zoom back to the end so you have my email again. If you have further questions, whoops. Feel free to contact me.